All right, it's five after ten. We have seven members present, but that's the record. Unfortunately, there aren't enough. We need three more, Councilmember Sven Kwan, Mr. Holden, Mr. Ridley Thomas, Mr. Savornich, Ms. Walters. Any three will do. One short. All right, we're ready. Ten after ten. Let's try to make this a habit. Hold on, because I have to call the roll first. Good mor—can I have the councilmembers? Take your seats, get organized, or at least get quiet. All right, thank you. Good morning. This is the meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on Wednesday, April 18th, 2001. There are 15 council districts. At the moment, there are only 13 councilmembers. We meet three times a week at pretty close to 10 o'clock, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. And what we're going to do this morning is, first, we're going to call the roll. Go ahead.
Bernson, Jake, Fear, Hernandez, Holden, Ms. Causi, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, Savornich, Wax, Walters, Galanter. Ten members present in the quorum. Madam President.
Thank you. Here's the plan, ladies and gentlemen. What we're going to do is go first into closed session and take care of the items that need to be done today. We've continued the ones that don't need to be done today. We'll then open the meeting to the public and go through our regular agenda, which I fondly hope will be finished with by about 11 o'clock, at which time we will be joined by some of our former colleagues and some of our current colleagues who aren't councilmembers, to spend the rest of the morning in tribute to John Ferraro. So we are now going to go into closed session, which means the television will go off. All right. Okay, we're on. Everybody still here? Here we go. We're going to do item 38 first, then we're going to go through the agenda, and then we'll finish the agenda. All right, so, item 38. Members of the council, item 38 is something that had been discussed previously in a closed session, I believe.
Yeah, and it's an appropriation of $650,000 in settlement of case, San Pedro Hotel et al versus City of Los Angeles and Rudy Savornich et al.
All right, and now, Madam City Attorney, I just need one question of you. It's listed on my agenda as an item where the public hearing has not been held, and obviously, people coming to—I don't know if anybody's coming on this item.
I would have thought that we would have had the public hearing.
There was a closed session discussion.
Oh, because this is just the appropriation.
This is just the appropriation.
Yes, you have to allow people to speak if they wish.
Does that mean—yeah, no, I understand that, but I mean, it's going to take them a while to come in if there's anybody there on that item. So can we go ahead and do it, and if somebody shows up, then we can reconsider?
Um...
I mean, the meeting's technically open right now.
If—and we have no cards, right? I would hold it for about two minutes until people come in and see what it is.
All right, we'll hold that for two minutes. Let's go through the—thank you, I need that. Go through the rest of the agenda.
Before the beginning of the regular agenda, there's closed session items to continue. Item 35—
We haven't approved the minutes yet either, by the way.
No. Approval of the minutes.
All right, without objection, the minutes are approved.
And comminatory resolutions for approval.
And those two.
Items 35A through C and 35E, request to continue those to April 24th, which is Tuesday.
All right, without objection, those all closed session items are continued to Tuesday.
And the closed session items 35D and F, request to continue those to April 25th, Wednesday.
Okay, those will be continued till Wednesday.
And on the regular agenda—
We just did 36, right? So, okay.
Item one is a required public hearing item. That's in Council District 15. It's a building and safety assessment.
All right.
I request to continue that one week.
Let's continue that one week. Very thoughtful. Okay. Item two is also a required public hearing, and of course—
There's an amending motion on that one. I believe it's been distributed. It's Mr. Holden's motion. It's seconded by Councilmember Hernandez.
Okay, we have item 2A. I don't know if it has been distributed, and I've got a copy here, though. All right, that's item two. Now, they're coming in slowly, but is there anybody who wishes to be heard on item two? Nobody yet. Now, in case the public hearing is closed, item two is before us as amended. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That's approved as amended. Okay, what else have we got here? Next.
Items three through 14 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, item—
Item 14 has two reports on the file. There's a majority and a minority report.
All right, let's call that special for the moment.
Just going to move the minority report.
All right, Ms. Walters moves the minority report on item 14. Do I hear a second? I hear several seconds. Okay. So we'll leave that in the list, and we don't have to call it special, but we need to—well, we do, because we need to vote on whether to—all right, so we're on 14, where a public hearing has already been held. The motion on the floor is to adopt the minority report. Is that the way we have to do it? You can't just vote—all right, so we have to—the first vote, I'm advised, is whether to substitute the minority report for the majority report. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. This isn't the first time this item has been before us, and we've heard and gone back and forth and several times that this item has been in committee. I still believe there's enough disagreement on the council that neither side will have eight votes. However, an issue as basic in the city as fixing streets, an issue as basic in the city of how best to spend our dollars, is important that today, of all days, I think we should just put other considerations and interests aside for the benefit and the sake of the greater city interest to be able to stand together and to move forward today. I will also, for today's purposes, be supporting the minority report, although I still believe that in the future, when these conversations come up, we need to look at needs-based and more technical and fair ways of distribution of these types of dollars. But I think today is special enough where colleagues—if I can ask—that we stand together and support the minority report for the sake of moving forward united as a city. I think we all want it that way.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez? No, okay. The matter is now before us. Open the roll on substituting the minority report for the majority report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
Okay, that's now substituted. Now, open the roll on the new majority report. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Nine ayes, one no.
All right, that's approved. Next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take up item number 38?
Madam City Attorney, are we—
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Excuse Mr. Savornich. Item 38 is before us. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to be heard on item 38? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Fourth with on that. That's item 38. Next.
Items three through 13. Item 11—excuse me, item 13 is a committee report to be submitted, and it's a communication from IGR Committee.
Now, what did you just say about item 11?
Excuse me, item 13.
Okay. But we can just vote on that, right? Mr. Padilla? I'd still have you listed up here. Is that—okay. Okay, we have before us items three through 13.
And these are public hearing have been held items.
Yes, the public hearings have been held. I do have one card on item three. Mr. McQuiston, we've already had a hearing on that. Unless I hear a motion for a new hearing, we're just going to move ahead. I don't hear any motions, so three through 13, any specials? No specials? Open the roll, three through 13. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. And the ordinance goes over one week.
And fourth with on item three, Madam—
Fourth with on—
Three.
On three, please. No, we can't. It's the ordinance. We don't have 12. So it goes over a week. Next.
Items 15 through 34, items for which public hearings have not been held.
All right, I don't have any cards from the public on any of those items. If there's anybody who wants to be heard on items 15 through 34, now's your chance. Fill out a card. Hold on, we have to close the public hearing first. Public hearing is now closed. Okay, any specials?
Madam President? Twenty-eight, only for the purpose of recusing myself, so people can vote on it.
Okay, item 28, let's do it now. We're going to do 28 now. Excuse Mr. Fewer.
Item 27, for the purpose of voting no.
Okay, item 27 will be called special, just for a separate vote. Item 28, members of the council, any other specials? Okay, let's go. Items 15 through 26 and 29 through 34, open the roll.
Madam Chair, my understanding is—
Mr. Hernandez.
Someone's trying to fill out a card on item 15, so we might—or 16.
16, all right, let's call 16 special. We have somebody who does want to be heard. We're doing—yeah, no, we're just sorting them out here. Hold on. The—okay, so items 15 through—well, we'll include 28 as—well, no, let's not do that. Let's just do 28. Open the roll on 28, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Open the roll, close the roll. It's happening. There we go.
Ten ayes.
All right, thank you. Those are approved. Mr. Fewer can now come back. Now, we're—any other specials? No other specials? 16 and 27 have been called special. Open the roll on 15, 17 through 26, and 29 through 34. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next.
On the continued agenda, item 37 and 39.
Okay.
Public hearings have not been held on those items.
All right, is there anybody who wants to be heard? Anybody in the audience wants to be heard on items 37, 38, or 39? No, sorry, we did 38. 37 or 39? Seeing none, the public hearings are closed. Members of the council—
Madam President, the—I'm sorry. The same drill on 39, please.
All right, let's—we'll excuse Mr. Fewer. We're now going to do 39. Open the roll on 39, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
39 is now approved. Now, we're going to open the roll on the rest of them. 37, right. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, that's approved. Brings us back to item 16, I believe. Okay, where's the gentleman who wanted to be heard on item 16? Now's your time.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
Without objection, 37, fourth with. Thank you.
Which one?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, yes. Fourth with on 37. Go ahead, sir.
I don't agree with the recommendations by the department, because I've been trying to get a hold of the inspector, so he can explain to me what's wrong with the property, and he's not returning my calls.
Okay.
Besides that, I have some pictures to prove that, you know, he's wrong, you know?
Okay, let me see if I can get you some help here. Mr. Ridley Thomas, this one is in your district.
Madam President, with your permission, we'll hold it on the desk only momentarily. My sense is that we will dispose of this as it ought to be, but I will afford the Speaker an opportunity to be heard.
Well, now, he was just heard, and his concern is that he's been having trouble getting hold of the inspector to find out what he needs to do, and that he has photographs.
By the time you get to the balance of the agenda, I assure you—
The agenda, you will have settled that?
I think it will be resolved.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir. Hold on, we're going to try to resolve it for you. All right, so we're holding item 16 on the desk. We're now up to item 27, which Ms. Walters called special just in order to be able to vote no. Is there anybody else on item 27? Open the roll on item 27. Ms. Walters, you wanted to vote no on item 27.
Yes, I'd like to vote no, because it's an exempt position, and I oppose these exempt positions.
Okay, here we go. Open the roll on item 27, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
All right, that is approved. What's left? That's about it.
Public comment?
Public comment. This is the time for—we have a little quiet out there as well as in here? We're almost on time here, guys. A remarkable feat. We have—this is the time for—this is the time for comments from the public on items not on today's agenda but within the council's purview. First, Mr. Melrose Larry Green, followed by Jim McQuiston. Mr. Green.
Good morning, everybody. I just wanted to speak very, very briefly, because I live in the fourth district. I've been living in the fourth—can we have some quiet, please, folks? I just wanted to speak very briefly at just one constituent, one of the 3 million people that live in the city of L.A., about what John Ferraro meant to me. He was a great guy. I can't think of coming to a city council meeting without seeing John Ferraro, and I wanted to express my condolences to his family and his friends, and to all of you, because I know that all of you love John Ferraro, and all of you at city council worked with him over the years. We Jewish people have a phrase in Yiddish, "a mensch," "a mensch," and that's a man with character. And John Ferraro was a man for all people, and I just wanted to express my condolences to his family and the staff in his office, and to all of you. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McQuiston.
Good morning. Jim McQuiston, from the East Hollywood Community Association. As you know, we're all deeply trying to get public response and public participation in the council matters and in the department matters. We have been trying to use the Brown Act, putting in special notification requirements, which the state requires the council and everyone else to inform us, and we have found that this system is not working properly. Things are happening that we are supposed to be notified about, and they're not being notified, and they're whizzing through without our being able to comment on them. We think that in the future, it would be a good idea to sharpen up on the notifications so that we all can participate and we don't feel left out, especially in our area, which is very much under fire. People are trying to make us secede from the city, and we don't want to, and it doesn't do us any good to try to go out and persuade our people not to secede when we're not getting the proper notices.
Thank you. All right, that closes the public comment period. We have a couple of housekeeping things still to do here on item 16. Mr. Ridley Thomas—I know, Mr. Ridley Thomas has requested that we continue that item for 30 days, so item 16 will be continued until May 18th, and Mr. Pacheco has requested that we continue item 18 until—
For two weeks, Madam—
All right, so we—he's moving to reconsider—
Move to reconsider.
—item 18 for the purpose of continuing. All right, if there's no objection, any objection to reconsidering 18, it's reconsidered and continued. Mr. Holden?
The agenda is item 43, which was approved, adopted by the council, requesting general manager, Department of Public Works—I mean—
I think it's Water and Power, yeah.
—what empower—to come give us a report regarding a matter before it. Understand that it's been—we have an acting general manager, so we just want to have a brief comment from him, and just maybe one or two questions, and send him on his way.
Okay, Mr. Salas? Now, just for—is he still here? Just for the information of everybody who hasn't heard the news, apparently, Mr. Bernson told me this morning that the mayor asked Mr. Freeman to make his departure quickly, and Mr. Freeman has done that. Is that correct?
That's right. In the interest of helping the state of California, Mr. Freeman has been let go.
I don't hear you too well.
Well, okay, wait, but that's not the issue.
Okay.
I'm just trying to explain why here you are instead of Dave Freeman, and I'm not sure the rest of the council has followed all this. the rest of the council has followed all this. So Mr. Salas has been appointed as the interim general manager. Congratulations, I guess.
Thank you.
Right, are you aware of the subject matter that we discussed yesterday, item forty-three, regarding Flashman Hiller?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine. All right, you don't... Do you have any specific details relating to that contract, if any at all, would you so state?
Well, it's a five-million-dollar contract to help us educate our customers and to work with community organizations to convey the department's message to our customers.
Right, there's been some question and concern and part of the ratepayers and members of the council, as well as myself, is what their function really was during the previous contract, and whether or not RFP, et cetera. Why don't you just... Before... All I want from you is that you will say that for the next two weeks, that you will not sign the contract as before it, number one. Number two is my understanding that the commission is asking for additional information regarding this contract as well.
That's correct, Mr. Holden. The commission approved the contract, subject to them being satisfied as to the expenditure programs and the detail of the budget.
So that it's not forthcoming in the next week or so?
That'll be coming in the next two weeks.
The next two weeks. So why don't you just... With that, I would be satisfied, Madam President, and maybe in the next ten days, therefore, we can meet and discuss this matter. But I think that whatever is decided or recommended by the commission, we would request that you come back and share that information with the members of the council.
Be more than happy to do so, Congressman.
Okay, if you get the information prior to their taking a decision, then I would suggest that you come back with the recommendation, that which they recommend to be adopted.
Will do.
Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez? Okay, so there's no real action required, except Mr. Salas will come back in a couple of weeks. Thank you. All right, that completes our regular meeting, which brings us to the reason there are more people in this chamber than usual. And let me just tell you the format that we're going to employ here. We're gonna begin with an invocation from Monsignor Fleming, from the L.A. Archdiocese. We're then gonna have a brief video of our leader. And at the end of that, I am going to introduce some of our guests in the chamber today. We're joined not only by all the non-council important city officials, but by a number of the former council members. It's sort of a shame it takes all this kind of an occasion to have this kind of a reunion, but welcome to all of you. Then we're going to give everybody a chance to speak, and here's the order. We're gonna start with the mayor, then the city attorney, the city comptroller, the city clerk, and then we're taking... Then I will have a few words to say. And then we're gonna do the council members in order of seniority, just to have a little variation on the alphabet here. Then we'll hear from any of our former colleagues who would like to say something, any appointed officials who are here. I see Chief Parks is here, and I'm sure there are others that I haven't had a chance to look at yet. We've invited a number of people to be a part of this, and I see the party, the celebration taking place around me. We will, after this is concluded, we will have a reception in the foyer outside the committee rooms across the hall here. And the... Then I'll remind you again... Let me tell you now, but I think everyone knows, and I'll remind you again, that the funeral and the viewing dates are as follows. There will be a viewing on Sunday at 8:00 p.m. at St. Brendan's Church, 310 South Van Ness. And the funeral, it will be in the same place, Monday at 10:00. There is not very much parking, except on the street, available there. We will have traffic officers to help you, and we will have remote parking with shuttles, but we haven't finalized all the details of that. John Ferraro probably had more friends than anybody in the entire world, and those who could make it this morning, of course, are assembled here. So let's begin first by hearing from Monsignor Fleming.
Let us take but a moment to place ourselves in the presence of God. Most loving God, we will hear much today about the life of John Ferraro, from his family, from his friends, but most of all, from all the people in Los Angeles who loved him deeply. I thank you for the time that I saw John in the hospital last week, and as I left that hospital, I was moved to read the scripture passage that I'd like to share at this point. This is St. Paul's final message to Timothy. To my beloved Timothy, as for me, my life is already being poured out as a libation, and a time has come for me to be gone. I have fought the good fight to the end. I have run the race to the finish. I have kept the faith. All there is to come now is a crown of righteousness, which is reserved for me, which the Lord, the righteous judge, will give to me this day, and not only to me, but anyone else who has longed to follow. Eternal wrath granted him, O Lord, and let perpetual light shine upon him, and may his soul and the souls who have faithfully departed to the mercy of God rest in peace. Amen.
Thank you, Monsignor. We're next going to hear from the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, who was one of John's many friends, Mayor Richard Reardon.
Thank you very much, President Protam. It's shocking to me to think that I had been with John Ferraro twice in the last four But then it is also consoling, because John was suffering. And I can tell you right now, he's in much happier circumstances with Margaret. She's making fun of God, and John's telling her to quiet down a little bit. But I can tell you, John, you deserve to be with God. You're a beautiful, wonderful man. You are the heart, the soul of our city of Los Angeles. Winston Churchill once said, "We make a living by what we get, but we make a life by what we give." And John Ferraro's life was a life of giving, giving to the people of Los Angeles, giving to the people of his district. This is certainly a sad time for all of us. John, you were a great leader on the football field, on the police commission, and as president of the city council. The things that you have done that we are gonna see for many years are amazing. You turned our zoo around from being uncredentialed to being one of the top zoos in the world. You had a lot to do with getting staples. You almost single-handedly brought us the 1984 Olympics, and on, and on, and on. John, thank you for being a friend, friend of the city, and a friend of mine. I love you, John. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to, before we hear from the city attorney and the city comptroller and the rest of us, have just a moment to think about John the way we really want to remember him, not the way he felt in his last few months, but the way he... When he looked like that. And so we're gonna have, as soon as we're ready... Are we ready? We're ready to roll here, and then I'll come back on.
Our first roaster is a man you all know and we all love, John Ferraro.
Thank you very much. Usually when someone gets a standing ovation, they're about to be fired. Bill, I wanted to ask you, how many shares do you have? Good. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, if there are some here. I'm honored to once again be part of this, what has truly become a Los Angeles tradition, to raise funds for the ADA and have a pretty good time doing it. As most of you know, I was the first roaster and had a great time.
Well, I'm greatly honored to be the first roaster here tonight. John and I were together at the Navy ROTC unit at USC, and later we served together in the Navy. Different as we are, we became lifelong friends after that experience. Indeed, from the very beginning, we had a mutually supportive relationship. I was undoubtedly the worst marcher in the Navy ROTC unit at USC, and John couldn't navigate his way from Long Beach to El Segundo.
And now it's the turn of the All-American, the Old Trojan, John Ferraro. Somebody thought that I was gonna be shocked tonight. I said, "When you play on a football team, if you can't take a ribbing, you're not gonna last very long." And if you deal with the people I deal with every day, you won't last very long. Now, Dick Reardon, isn't he wonderful? Look at him. You know, he says, "I live on Hudson Street, and it's Hudson Avenue." He says, "I was going down Third Avenue, and it's Third Street." That's the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. And I'm still trying to convince him that the city of Los Angeles has nothing to do with the Board of Education. But I think I've taken too long now. I'm very quiet. I don't like to talk too long. I usually give my time to Nate Holden, but he's left. Thank God. You know, you think we're joking about Nate Holden, but we're not. As I thought about roasting Hal, I had to face a real basic problem. Hal did not go to any university that anyone ever heard of. He's not funny. And to be honest, Hal is a pretty boring guy who's in bed by 8:30 every night. Hal presented a real challenge. Arnie did come up with the fact that Hal is known as Mr. Earthquake, because that has been his issue. But I commissioned a focus group, and found that ninety-six point three percent thought being dubbed Mr. Earthquake was pitiful enough, without us making fun of it.
John Ferraro stood over ten feet tall, and he gave special meaning to what it meant to be an All-American for All-Americans. John, it's great to be here with you today.
Mr. Hahn? Take your pick. You can have any microphone you want. Any microphone you want, even this one.
Well, it's already... This one's already been blessed, I think. To follow that act is always tough. And you know what? Nobody's going to be able to follow that act. John Ferraro was one of a kind, and we all knew that. John Ferraro was a great, great friend of the Hahn family, certainly my dad, and he, and all those who first started working on the Olympic movement idea. I remember being a teenager, going down to Mexico City with John and others who were trying to get the Olympics in 1976 for Los Angeles. But just like John, he never gave up. Once he had a goal, he was gonna see that goal through, and we were so proud in this city. When the 1984 Olympics happened, it would not have happened without John Ferraro and his leadership. And you could see from that video, and all of us saw over the years, his great sense of humor, his way that he could make anybody like him. He could make sure that even when some of his own colleagues maybe had problems with each other, he was able to be that oil on the waters, that way of calming things down. With a little quip, with a little nudge, he could keep things together, and he made sure that things move forward. He loved city government. He loved this city council. Most importantly, John Ferraro loved Los Angeles. As the mayor pointed out, John was the heart and soul of this city. I can't think of anybody who loved Los Angeles more than John Ferraro. He will be sorely missed by all of us, but I know that all of us will always remember John when we think about what it means to be involved in public service. He, more than anyone else, exemplified what it's all about. You know, don't use a big bullhorn, don't brag about everything you've done, don't make sure that you're the loudest person in the room. Just make sure that things get done. Just make sure that the people get served. Just make sure that everybody feels like this government works for all... Works for all of them. As Rick Tuttle said, he was an All-American, or All-Americans and All-Angelenos. John, we loved you dearly.
Thank you, Mr. Hahn. Mr. Tuttle.
I think I'll tell two stories about John Ferraro, one of which happened here at this council in the traditional City Hall building. It was about 1986, 1987, and Joy Picas and I, council member Picas, former member of the council, is here with us today. And I were working on an ordinance to prohibit discrimination in the large so-called private clubs of the city of Los Angeles, the Jonathan Club, the California Club, Los Angeles Country Club, Hillcrest, and so on. Discrimination lasted for a long time, based on gender, on race, on national origin, on sexual orientation. I did not know John well when I came downtown, and in that first year or two. I'd seen him some on the campaign trail when I'd been elected in 1985, but we were not well acquainted. But there was a general feeling that we had in the camp of those and us who were trying to get this ordinance passed, that if there was going to be an opposition, and there might be, because this was a very controversial measure, which had the opposition of very, very powerful people, that that opposition would be led by John Ferraro. And on the day that the presentation was made, Joy, council member Picas, stood up and made the presentation. And then Joy, I think you would agree with me, all eyes turned to see what John would do. He was not president at that time. He was said to be loyal opposition. Pat Russell was council president. We all turned, and John stood up and looked around. He had friends in the audience who were club members, their attorneys were there, and so on and so forth. And he looked around, and he said basically two things. One, that for years, though he had many friends in the clubs and had been member, California and Jonathan, he for a long time had been a member of the Los Angeles Athletic Club, which accepted everyone who could afford it and who was of good character of all backgrounds. And as he put it in his own common-sense way, "We all got along very well together and have done so for years." Then he turned, looking out at the audience, looking out at some of his friends in the audience, and said, "The time has come for this legislation, for the Picas legislation, because the clubs have failed to change themselves, in spite of the efforts of good people, Dick Reardon among them, who had tried so hard to do it, and Warren Christopher tried so hard to do it within the clubs." It's well-known that this has been going on. He said, "The time has come for this legislation." And about ten minutes later, the Picas motion passed unanimously, and John Ferraro stood about twenty... the Picas, uh, the, the Picas motion passed unanimously, and John Ferraro stood about twenty feet tall that day. I got to know him quite well in the next few years, primarily on trips we would make to Sacramento. And the other story has to do, in the early nineteen nineties, we were very hard-pressed on a series of legislative fronts. You may remember Sacramento was gonna try to take money from our budget, and so on and so forth. There were other issues that came up as well, and I remember one day, it was very heated, we were in a tight spot. The city lobbyists had called, we went up to try to deal with it. Ron Deaton was there, Nate Holden was there. I came up, uh, they kind of flew us in, and John Ferraro showed up. And we were in trouble, and about that time, the legislature was tipping to about fifty-fifty Republican and Democrat, as you may remember. And as we came to the back of the hall, pretty much where the, equivalent to where the folks back there are standing now, uh, just off the Assembly Chamber, a fellow spotted John, came all the way across, as though coming from front to back, came all the way across the hall to see him, gave him a great hug, and said, "John, it's wonderful to see you, is there anything I can do for you?" And that was Gil Ferguson, who was proud to claim the title as the most conservative member of the legislature. We turned around, John told him what he could do, we discussed the matter a bit. Turned around, walked towards the, uh, legislature, was adjourning, another member came from all the way across at the diagonal, threw his arms around the same torso, around the same shoulders, and said, "John, it's wonderful to see you, is there anything we can do for you?" And that's Willie Brown, who, over the last half-century, had probably the most liberal voting record uh, in Sacramento, and both wanted to be helpful to John Ferraro. Ladies and gentlemen, John Ferraro was a great, and, and by the way, we worked out the matter that needed to be worked out with bipartisan help. John Ferraro has indeed been a great treasure for the city of Los Angeles. I have benefited so much from having the opportunity to have met him along the way. I treasure the Friday afternoons in his office, discussing the, the issues of the day and some of the history of the city. I, uh, treasure our October and November jocularity with our bets on the UCLA and USC football game. He basically, over the last ten years, has purchased this suit and the shoes I have with the bets, wagers he has lost. Uh, he has been a, he's been a, a great friend, uh, to me, it's been my privilege to call him friend, but also, of much more importance, he has been a great servant of the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle. I'd ne, like next to call on our city clerk, Mike Carey. Mike, of course, does a lot of the behind-the-scenes work, so, and we try to get him up here as little as possible.
On behalf of all the prior city clerks, uh, former and current city clerk employees and myself, I really want to express my condolences to his family and his, uh, council staff. He was truly a unique individual. The president always treated me and my staff with dignity and respect, even in those times which are becoming more frequent, when the council is a rather tense in its role of passing legislation and governing in the city of Los Angeles. He truly set a standard for future presidents of this institution. He was able to garner support when he needed to and calm down the membership when he also needed to do that. On a very personal level, uh, I recently lost my father, and unlike my father, uh, who I deeply respected and was a guiding force in my life, President Ferraro also played a critical role in, in my city clerk career. I am truly gonna miss the man, he, uh, he was truly a, a, a help to me, and he always looked after me, and, uh, even when I made the mistakes, he was the first to say, "Don't sweat it, Mike, uh, uh, we'll get on." So, again, my condolences to his family and, and to the council staff.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Um, we're gonna start now on the current council members. Um, let me just take a moment to welcome the former members who are here, they're gonna get a chance as well. If I haven't missed anybody, we have, uh, former council members Roz Wyman, Bob Wilkinson, Ed Edelman, Art Snyder, Michael Wu, Richard Alatorre, and Joy Picas. Joan Flores is out of the country, and Ernie Bernardi unfortunately was not able to make it today, he's ill. But I imagine he's watching us. Ernie always keeps an eye on us. Um, I would like to just add a couple of things about John. I guess everybody else gets to stand up, I'm gonna do that as well. You've all heard a lot, and you will hear a lot, about John's service to the city, and, and all of that, of course, is true, and there are stories that, you can go on for weeks telling John Ferraro stories. There are almost as many John stories as there are Margaret stories. But the John ones you can usually tell in public. I, I did wanna focus on the fact, on a couple of things. I mentioned earlier that John probably had more friends than anybody, and I just wanna tell a couple of stories about my experiences trotting along after him on some city business in places where you wouldn't expect these things to happen. In Washington DC, you could not walk down a corridor in any of the uh, congressional buildings without having to wait a few times while people popped out of offices and said, "Why, John, what are you doing here?" And then you'd stop and wait while they caught up on football history and a number of other things, uh, and then you'd go on. But there we were in Seattle, checking out the back entrances to the Seattle Zoo, and we're walking across the Seattle Zoo, in the middle of the day, in Seattle. And somebody stops him, who it turns out had been at a banquet with him twenty years earlier or something like that, they hadn't seen each other forever. We had to stop and wait there too, while we settled out what was going on in the football games and um, a number of other things that were going on. So, I really came to appreciate that, um, uh, it wasn't because he was president of the city council, it's because he was John, that people remembered him, people loved him, um, and, and they were all over the place. I, I remember the first time I met him, I came into this council chamber to be sworn in, I was not in very good health, and, um, Mr. Ferraro, who had had his own bouts with, uh, emergency medical care previously, came over to me, patted me on the shoulder and said, "Welcome to the council, now get yourself better, it'll all be waiting for you when you're ready to do it full-time." And I've always remembered that. But besides being a wonderful human being, let's not forget that John Ferraro was a really slick pal. He really knew how to do what he was doing. And one of the slickest maneuvers I watched him conduct in here one day was, um, he actually was about to lose a vote, which was a very rare thing, but he was gonna lose this, I don't even remember what it was, but he was gonna lose this vote very big time. And at the last second, as you know, we often send something to committee rather than have it go down to defeat, at the last second, John had somebody make a motion to send his item to committee, and he got a unanimous vote. And I thought, gee, you know, that's pretty smart, that what was gonna be a unanimous turn down, or close to it, turned into a unanimous victory. And then he went right on with the meeting without taking a breath. I came over to congratulate him. The most remarkable thing about John, though, if you have to choose, I think, is the relationship that he had with Margaret. And, um, it's really hard to know what to say about it. His, his, uh, the love between them was something absolutely beautiful to witness, even from across the room. And even when they were carping at each other, which they did with, with gusto, and, uh, they both enjoyed it a lot. So I think that as we remember John, the great public servant, it's also important, it's certainly very important to me, to think of him as the really wonderful human being that he was, and to remember also that he remains a part of all of us. Thank you. So, in order of seniority, Mr. Burnson.
Thank you. Well, first of all, let me just say that, uh, my first encounter with John Ferraro was when I was a kid working at the Coliseum, watching him play football at SC. And, uh, later, when I became involved in community activities, uh, John was always available if I had something to say or questions before I ran for office. And, uh, finally, when I did get here, John was an inspiration and a teacher. Uh, he taught me how to get along with people, which wasn't always my best suit. But I learned from John, and I can almost do that now. But, um, John was, was a leader here, but he was a leader with a very quiet manner. He didn't holler, he didn't raise his voice. He just quietly exuded the leadership that we all know that he exerted upon us as members of the council. And I've served with a number of, being the next to the senior now, with the exception of Joel. I've seen a lot of council members come and go. And John always was able to work with everybody and get the best from them. That was important. He got the best out of people that they had to offer, which was really a great aptitude on his part. He was really the spirit of Los Angeles. You've all heard the things that he did, the Olympics and so forth. And I was part of some of that stuff. And, uh, I just marveled at the way he was able to manipulate, I won't even word, use the word manipulate, how to navigate the, the political waters. Regardless of who it was, John was always respected. Everything that you could rely upon what he said, his word was his bond. He never went back on it. He was a, not just a leader to me, he became a very dear friend. And I could tell probably a lot of stories, uh, going back to the Gil Lindsay days, and I see some of my former colleagues sitting there, they could probably remember some of these things. Uh, working with the two of them was, was an experience that I will never forget in all of my years. But probably my dearest memory, and what I think gave me the greatest respect for John of everything else, was the way he took care of his wife after her affliction. I have never seen a human being more caring, more loving in a situation like that. John, the city is gonna miss you. We miss you. God bless you.
Thank you. Mr. Holden?
Ferrara, Ferrara, Ferrara. He'll always be with us. I know that, uh, when I first got elected to the council, he called me over into his office, in fact. He said, "I want you to understand one thing." I says, "What?" He said, "I'm chairman of the Black Caucus." And Gil Lindsay and Bob Farrell understands that, and you have to understand it also. He said, "How you like that, brother?" So I figured when he, if he could say brother so easily, he, he knew what it's like to be a brother. And, uh, but I really got to know John in the field of politics when I worked for Supervisor Han. Uh, got on his staff in nineteen sixty-nine, and of course, John was elected, and Kenny served part of the district. Uh, we had a little proposition to come up called Proposition A. Everybody else talked about building Metro Rail and having a rail system and digging holes. But when Kenny came up with the idea of putting that matter on the ballot, it was few people, including John Ferraro, he would remind me, "Don't forget, I'm the one who joined Kenny in that effort." "I'm the one who had a news conference with Kenny in order to make sure the proposition would pass." It was not until then that the money was made available for matching funds for, for Metro Rail. And a lot of the guys I see shaking their heads now when they were saying, "No, but that's okay, it got, it was done." Uh, I say to you that, uh, John was, he knew the game very well. Politics, he knew the rules, he played them. I remember once, I can tell you many stories, it was about the Staples Center. The vote was fourteen to one. If the matter had been put over for a week because one person withheld, and I withheld, I took within my three minutes, he said, "Your timer is running, so don't take any more time," so I withheld. Very smart, very clever. And it turns out that as I, some reporter wanted to interview me, and I didn't wanna do the interview. "Come on, this is a very important issue, I wanna interview you." So I went to the back of the chambers to be interviewed. Remember that time? And the reporter says, "No, we can't do it here, you have to do it in the hallway." So I had one foot in the door in the chambers, one foot in the hallway, and she snatched me out into the hallway to do the interview. And while I was, just before I moved out, John says, I changed, he changed his vote from "I didn't know", which meant he could ask for reconsideration. And while I had both feet out of, in the hallway, he asked for reconsideration, and boom, they voted for the measure, and they got it through. I couldn't, I came in, I couldn't believe this. "What are you doing to me?" I said to John. He said, "You know, eh, brother, you, you, you're gonna learn, brother." So, uh, there were some other controversial issues, and I gotta credit John and, and Zevia Slavsky, Richard Alatorre, and others. We had some problems with the, the former police chief, and they're gonna, uh, one, the current police chief was, was gonna leave us, and, uh, we didn't want that to happen, 'cause he had many years with us, and John's leadership is the reason why, uh, he held on and did not re, take an early retirement. And the mayor, you appointed Parks Chief, and we all supported that, and, but it was John Ferrara, Richard Alatorre, Zevia Slavsky, I and a couple others who made it possible for that to happen. In closing, I wanna say that, uh, I've known John when he was like a giant. He's well and strong. And then I visited him when he was flat of his back. And after his first major operation, I took some weights over and put him on his ankle, put him on his arms, so he could exercise. And, uh, he did very well, he got up, and then of course, he had a recurrence. And just last Saturday, I visited him in the hospital. Very sad day for me. But I wanted to be happy as it appeared to him that I was happy, I didn't want him to be, be sad at all. So I talked to him, and as I walked in, I said, "Hi, Mr. President. How are you, Mr. President?" And he says, always said, "You got my back." I said, "I got your back, Mr. President." And he went thumbs up to me. And, uh, you know, I remember his smile on his face. And, uh, I'll never forget you, John, your brother. And wherever you are, I want you to know, you're chairman of the Black Caucus.
This is Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Obviously, I did not have the longevity in terms of the years that some of, uh, you had in working with John. But I had known him through the years, um, from my work at the school board, and for a number of years there at the school board, there was another elected official who shared John's, uh, last name. But, uh, he took great pleasure, in my opinion, in trading on the goodwill of John Ferraro's name. People would sometimes make the mistake in introducing him and say, "There, there," and you never corrected him. So John and I, when we'd see each other, we'd kinda laugh about that, and it was a joke between us. At one particularly very difficult and trying point in, uh, the school district, uh, when I was there, um, and as president of the board, John gave me a call and said some very encouraging words. And I always appreciated that, that even though, uh, the city had no authority over what was going on in the school district, he was still watching it, he still cared about it, and he picked up the phone and called to say that. And that was very encouraging, um, to me. Some of the things that I liked, uh, best about John, and again, it's something that I think most, uh, have, everyone has recognized who knew him, was his devotion to and his concern about his wife, Margaret. They really were a wonderful couple. And to see the way he cared for her at pub, public functions, seeing that she was comfortably seated, and then, um, that she had room to move slowly when she got up and, uh, left, and then in later years, uh, when she was in the wheelchair. She was always number one, and that was a great thing, uh, to observe. I also took, um, um, personal pleasure in John's relationship with my son, David. David enjoyed doing small things that he could do for John, like bringing him a cup of coffee, or when he was here and wasn't able to walk to the elevator, helping with the wheelchair. And John, um, always said to me, said he's a very nice man. And I just thought that was so great of John, to take that interest in David, recognize how much it meant to David to do things for John. John was not only dedicated to serving Los Angeles, but he was also dedicated to meeting the needs of other cities and agencies when he could and it wouldn't harm Los Angeles. the needs of other cities and agencies when he could and it wouldn't harm Los Angeles. I remember several years ago, and I was almost dead asleep, not quite, but it was about ten o'clock at night, I got this phone call from the mayor of another city, Bob Bartlett over in Monrovia. And he was at some league meeting in Rosemead. And they needed another vote in order for Monrovia to receive this million dollar grant or whatever it was. So Bob Bartlett called me and said, "Will you come out and vote?" I said, "Bob, I don't think I'd go to Rosemead tonight for my mother." He said, "Well, can you get somebody else who can do that?" He said, "What about John or what about Hal?" I said, "I'll try to call them and see." I couldn't give them, him their phone numbers, but I told him I would call them and see if they could. And I managed to contact Hal and I told him that I was going to call John. He said, "Well, if you can't get John, call me back." And he was going to go. He was going to go all the way from Chatsworth to Rosemead. But I got John on the phone and John said, "Oh, I'll go. No problem, I'll go." And not only did he say he would go, he went because that money was very, very important to the other city and the maintenance of goodwill among our sister cities was very important. And I thought that that was really quite a sacrifice on, on his part. He was well-liked in California. He was well-liked in the National League of Cities and in the California League of Cities. And he was well-liked in the neighborhoods across Los Angeles. To say he will be missed is an understatement.
Thank you. Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Madam President, it was in July of ninety-one when I was sworn in in the City Hall facilities across the way. And as you'll recall, some of you, John Ferraro, as he does on most occasions, offered the biographical introduction. Interestingly enough, there were two things that were perhaps distinctive about my career at that time. The most important to me perhaps was my being the executive director of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, SCLC. But it was the fact that I had graduated, having completed advanced work at USC that was most important to John Ferraro. And from that point forward, a sense of connection was established. That one anecdote will suffice. The second point that I want to make rather briefly is I rise to verify the report given by Mr. Holden in both instances. It is the case that we waited for him to be escorted out of the room so that a vote could be taken. But be not deceived, if we know Nate Holden at all, as John Ferraro obviously did, Nate knew precisely what we were doing and just kind of went along with it and came back with his theatrics only to dramatize the point. John would have me say that, I thought we'd make that point here. In that connection as well, the second point, it is the case that in this era of coalition building as it has defined the way in which politics is to be done in the city of Los Angeles, Mr. Ferraro did introduce himself as the chairman of the Black Caucus. It was a startling revelation to me when he first made that point. And I'm not sure that I fully understood what he was saying, or I didn't at that time, but he chronicled his history with Gil Lindsay, Billy Mills, Tom Bradley, David Cunningham, as well as my predecessor, Bob Farrell, and made it clear that he had earned the chairmanship of the Black Caucus. Mr. Holden, that is correct, and I wish to verify your representations in that regard. And it is the case that to clinch the sentiment, he would say, "You do understand what I'm saying, don't you, brother?" My final point will suffice as it is often the case in the business in which we are engaged, that of policymaking, that of deliberating, that of trying to reconcile often differing points of views, conflicting claims, competing interests. It is unavoidable that conflicts of a difficult sort will arise. Hal Berndsen testified to his own way of attempting to resolve them with John's assistance and intervention. And he tells us today that he's still working at that matter. It is the case that John and I had occasion to differ, and some of those who are here would periodically obviously encourage that. And apparently after one particular episode, a group went to Mr. Ferraro and said, "What are you going to do with that guy?" To which he responded in the colloquial expression that is probably relegated to the past, he said, "Don't worry about him, I done explained it to him enough." Well, I'll leave it to you all to interpret all of what that means. I simply want to take my seat by saying that we are sobered by John Ferraro's death. But at once, we take this opportunity to celebrate his life. May the Lord bless him.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chairman of the council, people who are here, I think many people know John had a real special part in my life. But first, I just need to straighten something out because some of my colleagues have made reference to this Black Caucus. John Ferraro's favorite line to me was, "Us Latinos have to stick together." And, and, and he wasn't shy about that.
He never said it to the women, though.
But, but, but you, you need to know that on several occasions, he, he would bring that point up to me. And I, I think part of his reasoning there was he, he knew us better than most of us knew each other. I, I can honestly say that. I remember coming into this council and, and doing a few things that weren't according to the council rules. Once I filled out a card so I could speak on that side of the podium, so I could get more than three minutes. And John let me do that. On another occasion, I, I basically remember the council president saying, "Mr. Hernandez, why are you asking all those questions? You should do your homework before the meeting." And I said, "I did do my homework, Mr. President, I just think everybody else should know about it." And then John would proceed to share with people that I tended to do my homework. You know, the, the council president, and he'll always be the council president to me because he's the only council president I knew. I knew several mayors. I had the opportunity to meet several police chiefs, department heads, and many colleagues. And he really cared about what we do. And he cared about each and every one of us. And so his style of leadership was something I studied. And it's because I wanted to learn from him. I found out that when you go to SCAG meetings, everybody knew John Ferraro because he played a leadership role there. When you go to the state leagues, John had played a leadership role there. And at the national league, he played a leadership role. And it was me accepting part of, being part of those bodies that gave me an understanding of the role Los Angeles plays in our country and in our state. But it was because of John's leadership that I took those positions. I learned from John that his word is impeccable. When John said something, he meant it. And I also learned in a very personal time of my life that he cared about me. And he basically helped me and, and helped me. And that's what John was about. He taught me how to count. You know, at first I had to learn to count to eight, and then I had to learn to count to ten. And then I figured out that when there was basically eleven of us, if three of us broke a quorum, you guys couldn't do anything. And we were part of that boat. And I learned that if there was thirteen of us, we needed basically five of us to break that quorum, six of us to break that quorum. And we did that when we dealt with water rates. And John told me he learned how to count too well. But we basically, through John Ferraro's actions, I learned that really to care about the city. You know, when, I am, I know that a lot of people take credit for Staples Center today, but there's really one person who made Staples Center happen in this city, and that's John Ferraro. John said it had to be done. And we had to do it quickly. And today, I think a lot of us are proud of Staples Center and, and what it's brought to the city. I think he displayed that same kind of leadership when we were talking about City Hall restoration, that same kind of leadership when we're talking about the Coliseum. I know he did that for his district. He used his power quietly. And he really didn't care who got the credit. On a personal note, I was someone who grew up without a father and I saw John as a father figure for me. But I also know he cared about his son, Lucky, who worked in my office. And I had the opportunity to hopefully bring him closer together in John's last days. John Ferraro was a caring man, not only when it came to his wife and his family, but this body. And he understood clearly the difficulty we all go through in trying to be public officials. But he also understood leadership and the need to get things done. So it's been basically my honor to be able to know someone like John Ferraro, to have him be part of my life. And he'll be missed. Yesterday, we were sitting in Ron Deaton's office and Ron kind of brought the point that when we're grieving, it, we, we tend to forget that it has nothing to do with the person who died, it has a lot to do with us. And I was sharing with some friends last night that something strange happened at City Hall yesterday, and I was part of it, is that council members were wandering in the halls. My office didn't know where I was when I was at Ron Deaton's office with Hal Berndsen and Richard Alatori and Rudy Savornich. And then Cindy Masekowsky and Rudy came to my office and I went over to Nick's office and I looked for Mark and I looked for, for Ruth. And, and we arrived late to the mayor's press conference and we were wandering, wondering what's going to happen next. And I thought that was healthy. I thought it was very healthy. And I think that was a tribute to the leadership of the father of this body. And I shared that with my wife this morning and she thought that was important, I share with everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Savornich.
Thank you, Madam President. It doesn't seem like eight years has gone by when at the first council meeting for four of us new council members, John allowed each and every one of us to stand up and, and say something. And I remember that day as it was yesterday, where for the first time that I was introduced, he pronounced my name wrong. And he introduced me as Councilman Savornovich. And here I was with my knees knocking, stood up and called him President Ferrero. And shortly after the meeting adjourned, he asked me to come up to the office and said that many in this building didn't think I was going to make it here. But now that I did, he was going to make sure that I was successful. And because of him and Hal and Nate and Richard, I felt that I was able to do the job that I was sent here to do. In nineteen ninety-seven, when I was running for reelection, John and Margaret came all the way down to San Pedro at a, at a dinner. And John stood up in, in front of everyone and said, "You know, one man can make a difference in this town. I was so proud to see as I got off of the freeway that the head of the local mafia no longer takes the dash bus but was promoted to a Nash Rambler." And the place was in stitches. And John said, "You know, when Rudy first got here, we didn't think he knew much. And he proved us all wrong." And Margaret blurted out in her stage whisper, "Too bad the same didn't hold for you, John", and brought the place down. One of the things to which I've had a, a very fond relationship with John is that there's a word both in Italian and Spanish that commend as much respect as you can give a person. And that title is padrino. That's what I called him. It means godfather. Not in the sense that many of us have been trained to see as what that means in the movies, but in a real spiritual sense, it's someone who takes you under your wing and guides you in the right direction. For those of us who are Catholic, it's, it's very symbolic. Because that's the person that if something happened to your parents, they take care of you. And it was just a few years ago that John gave to me this ticket, which is a USC versus Oregon State, seventy-five years of Trojan football at the L.A. Memorial Coliseum. And he gave it to me at the council meeting following September nineteenth, nineteen ninety-eight. And he signed it. And he said, "Give this to your boy when he grows up as a, as a souvenir." And I will. And the one thing that I have to say is that I believe yesterday the city of Los Angeles lost one of its greatest heroes. And I lost one of my lifetime.
Thank you. The next in line is Ms. Chick, who is out of town but did send a message. And if I may, I just want to read Laura's very brief comments. "I wanted to share some of the things that I remember most about John. His warm, wonderful, gentle, caring smile. His ongoing desire and ability to get all fourteen of us on the city council to quiet down when it was time to conduct business. His love of USC and their football team in particular, his special love for his wife, Margaret, and his great love and dedication to the city of Los Angeles. Our city will forever be blessed by all John gave us, and I will miss him enormously. You and everybody else." Mr. Fuhrer.
Thank you very much, Madam President. It's, it's a very moving morning for everybody here, and I hope particularly for John's family and for his staff, who by the way are essentially extended family for John, as we all know. First, I want to make clear in response to Mr. Hernandez, Mr. Holden and Mr. Ridley Thomas, John and I never had that Jewish caucus conversation. We never, never even had a tall, skinny conversation, there was just none of that. When I, everyone's recalling their initial city council connections with John, the day that I was sworn in, we had a, kind of a ceremony in the old council chamber over which John presided. When, when I got married, Gail and I were young and I was very nervous. And I was supposed to go up to the Beeman and then go back and bring Gail forward, and I, I sort of forgot. So I had to be reminded to go get my bride-to-be to come forward about eighteen years ago or so. And I thought I would never do that again until the day that I was sworn in, when I went up to the front of the old city council chamber and sat near John and Judge Pregerson, who was going to actually swear me in. And John looked out and noted that Gail was out in the audience and not up there. And in a manner that all of us have come to recognize with John, which is the epitome of grace in dealing with situations like that, John walked down very casually to Gail and then kind of picked her up and took her by the hand as though he were escorting the Queen of England, you know. Queen of England, you know, a treasure of a person, and brought her forward with such style and such warmth. It was a very, very important welcoming gesture that still means a lot to Gail and to me. That was a big deal. We all have our little John stories. I'll just digress for a second to say, I was on the council for a very brief period of time, and I was obviously just a kid. I know how Alex Padilla felt when he joined us, because that's how I felt when I joined us. Rudy may be younger than I, but he wasn't younger in stature on the council than I. That was me. And John made a big point early, early on of basically conveying to me that I had a lot of responsibility here, and he was going to invest a lot of trust in me, in the committee assignments I got and in other ways. And I've never forgotten that, because it really, you know, Hal said it very well. It was an effort to bring out the best in me. It was an effort to get me to rise to his aspirations as well. And those aspirations took a lot of different turns. For example, also early on, there was a Ukrainian gymnast, a little girl, who was to be introduced on the city council floor to the council, who had a last name with about 26 consonants in a row. And for some reason, and John must remember this, they asked me to introduce this gymnast. I think I was burdened by the, what people thought, you know, I got all this grief from my education, people thought I could somehow do this, unpronounceable last name thing. And that's sort of been what John has done since I've been here, is I get the unpronounceable last name routine here. John, when I think of today, I was sitting here listening to everybody's very moving testaments to their depth of relationship with John. And I was thinking about a word that I know a lot of people in City Hall are contemplating these days, and that's the word legacy. There is going to be a turnover in city government. A lot of us are leaving here. People are thinking about how they'll be remembered, I know. And when I think of that and I think of John, there are so many accomplishments to which people have pointed, and they've done it very well, I don't need to recite them again. But I think that the most important aspect of one's legacy is how they are remembered as a person more than anything else. The commentary about how John and Margaret interacted, you know, a depth of affection that, you know, I also hope to aspire to in my relationship with Gail. It's almost impossible to achieve that kind of connection with somebody. The kind of person you are in dealing, not only in respecting other people, but looking to find that aspect of the person with which you can relate and bring that out so there's some common ground there. And that's really what John's legacy will always be for me. All of us will miss him very much. He's been a very special person to everybody here and an extraordinary towering leader for all of us in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Everyone has their first steps in City Hall with John. Shortly after I was elected '97, I was invited by DWP to go with Ruth up to Inyo County, Mono County, to deal with a water issue. And we've all talked about seeing John, being with John, no matter where you are, any part of the world, and people would come up and know John. And even if you weren't with John, people came up and asked about John. John had been with Zev part of a wonderful legacy in moving forward the decades of war that we had had in this city with those who governed the land where we had our water. And enmity, lawsuits, that was the order of the day, until John came in and said, "I'm not going to send the lawyers up there, I'm going to go up there." And John went up there with Zev, met with these people, one-on-one, treated them as peers, treated them with integrity, and they remembered that, and the wars ended. And even though I went up there shortly after I was elected, everyone wanted to talk to me, tell me, ask about John. And that is, I think, what is always going to continue. I'm also going to share a story that I heard yesterday, because I think all the issues we've talked about, integrity, leadership, honesty, humor, caring, John also was the epitome of humanity. And Kelly Martin shared the story that just recently, they had been, when they had been traveling on a trip to Europe, to London, they had a day where they weren't doing business, and it was a layover day, and she and John got on one of the red double-decker buses in London to see the city, it was something that he could do easily. And another family joined and got on the bus with them, that they didn't know, just another tourist. And there was our big John Ferraro and a little five-year-old who sat in front of him, who wanted to get engaged in a conversation, engaged in a wonderful animated twinkling conversation. The little boy, about five years old, was speaking in French, and John was speaking in English. But they continued carrying on. And that is the humanity of John, that a little five-year-old can see this big, tall man and know it's a friend, know that there's a place of comfort, know that there's someone to share. John, you are our Los Angeles treasure. You are beloved, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Obviously, being one of the new members, I can't share or take any credit for all of John's accomplishments, because I wasn't here. But John, to me, more is about the moments and the personal relationship that we developed just sort of on the floor or at his office. One of the first things that, or the most often thing I experienced with John was his sense of humor. When he came to my swearing-in ceremony at the L.A. Theater, the next day, I talked to him, and he commented about the fact that there were close to 1,200 people there, and he wasn't sure if it was a swearing-in ceremony or some sort of coronation. And I had made the basic rookie mistake of not introducing anyone, and so I had to, the first thing I had to do was apologize to John. And he was kind and said, "Don't worry about it, we all start somewhere." The only other, the other thing that he constantly, or the one thing he did ask me is, he couldn't quite figure out how Jackie Goldberg and I both graduated from UC Berkeley, considering how we voted and how we handled the issues. And I would occasionally talk to him. The one time I actually got to rib him a little was after Cal trounced USC last year at the Coliseum. And I saw him at the chair, and I told him that I was going to call him, because I thought maybe he was having a difficult time with that. And instead of making it awkward for me, he said, "You know, I really just appreciate the fact that someone is talking to me about football," because he hadn't talked about football with any of his colleagues in a while. The one thing that I do remember, and everyone's talked about Margaret so much, is that at the Project Restored Dinner out there by City Hall, she saw me and stopped me, because I said hello to John and her, and she said, "Oh, you're one of those young council members, one of the new ones." I said, "Yeah, I'm Pacheco, and John sometimes calls me Padilla, but that's okay. And, but I'm Pacheco." She said, "Oh, yeah, you two young ones, you're pretty good-looking, but you don't really give John a run for his money quite." I said, "Okay." I said, "Okay." And that was, you know, as the president pro tem said, that was the one I could say in public about Margaret. And the only other time that John really gave me a ribbing was when, for a moment there, I actually thought I could carry a beard and grew some facial hair, and he said, "You know, you're starting to show you're a Cal graduate, and you should really get away from that." And at one point, I had a crew cut, and I really think he really preferred me in a crew cut. I guess that was more of a USC decorum. And the only other thing I will say is, at the very first meeting I had with John, there were two awkward and interesting moments, or actually, one awkward moment, one very important moment. But I'm talking to John, introducing myself, he's talking to me about my role and telling me the responsibilities I have as a council member. And we're going over issues, and I bring my deputy chief of staff, and out of nowhere, John looks at him and goes, "Son, how old are you?" And I'm going, he's pointing at my deputy chief of staff, and he looks and goes, "You ever thought about gaining on a diet?" I go, "What's..." And then all of a sudden, I hear my deputy chief of staff, who's a UCLA graduate, going, "Mr. Ferraro, in the last eight years, I've had a great bounty of USC," because for eight years, UCLA had beaten, UCLA had beaten USC. But they had this awkward exchange. I'm like, "What's going on?" And I didn't understand that John had had heart surgery. And he was actually very sincerely concerned about one of my staffers' well-being. And of course, I'm sitting there thinking, "My staffer's going to ask for a raise, because John's now talking them into getting a nutritionist." And I was just going, "This is not good." And at the end of that meeting, he basically said what I think he's probably told everyone over and over. And that is that as much responsibility as you have as a council member, you will have lots of pressures to make a lot of decisions from different friends, from different people, from contributors, from people you know from the neighborhood. And the last thing he left me with is, always remember that you have a responsibility to do what's in the city's best interest, and don't ever forget that. And that's my biggest memory of John being sort of my mentor in the short period, is always do what's in the city's best interest. And that came really handy when people were really giving me a tough time on the Democratic Convention vote. I really just punted and said, "You know, there were arguments on both sides that were good, and council member, Council President Ferraro, who's been here for 30 years, probably knows what's best for the city." And I followed his lead, and I think it all turned out well. And I am going to miss him very much.
Thank you. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. I think I'll turn and face the audience, I'll feel a little bit more comfortable this way. You know, our city's about to undergo a big change, most of which we've seen coming, most of which we've been preparing for. In the June elections and the swearing-ins in July, we're going to have a new mayor, a new city attorney, a new comptroller, and nearly half the council is going to turn over. We know that in two years, nearly the other half of the council will turn over. And it's this point in time for the city that we're going to deal with transition and the impact of term limits. And what we've expected is loss of institutional memory, a change in faces, and a loss of experience, relatively speaking here on the body. What I think is going to impact us 10 times as much now is the one thing that we didn't expect, and that was to have lost John at this point in time. I think we're all banking on having the stability through that transition period to know that John might have been around in some capacity to serve as that sage advisor, to guide us through that transition, to guide us through that turnover. And that's going to be a real, real impact for us. Given that, people look at Councilmember Misakowski and Pacheco and myself and say, "Well, you are the three folks that are going to be here through that transition period. You three will provide that continuity, and you're in such a great position." But today, I feel and I believe that we are the ones at a loss here, because especially for Councilmember Pacheco and I, we were the ones that only had two years to serve with Councilmember Ferraro. I'm the first to admit, John was great to me. He helped me out in ways that none of you will ever know, and even I, only over time, will really get to know. But I also know that if he was able to touch me and touch us the way he did in two years, I can only imagine what he's meant for the likes of my colleagues who have been here 20 years, or 10 years, or 30 years, Councilmember Wax's case, or Supervisor Yaroslavsky, or Ron Deaton, or other people who are sort of behind the scenes. He also told me he was a member of the Latino Caucus, or he didn't mention caucus, he just said, "Us Latinos have to stick together." I didn't realize how many caucuses there were on this council. The Latino Caucus, the Black Caucus, the Jewish Caucus. The one caucus he invited me into, I'm sorry, Mike, but there was a tall man's caucus. And we were, we were getting ready to introduce the motion to lobby for bigger chairs. And I too had my drawer taken out because of my knees underneath this desk. But whether it's trying to fit into the bigger chair, or trying to fit in to John's expectations, or, as the saying goes, trying to live up to somebody's standards and maybe not necessarily fill their shoes, I think we do have John to continue to look up to as someone to emulate, someone to learn from, even in his passing. You all know better than I do what his legacy is on this council and with this city, from the Olympics to Staples Arena to the zoo, and on and on and on. But I think a couple of things I wanted to share. He introduced my first motion. After my election and before my swearing-in, there were things going on in my district that needed to be responded to. I hadn't been sworn in yet, so I couldn't formally introduce the motion. But he was more than willing and open, telling my interim staff at the time, "Bring it to me, I'll introduce it for you." And so he was helpful to me even before I was sworn in. Or the conversation after conversation, not only in his office, but just right there in that chair next to the president's chair, or the chair's chair, and him saying, "Look what's going on." And, you know, "You may not see this," but him pointing things out, giving me history about people who were testifying, about people around the horseshoe, about people in the audience, that would have taken me years to learn or figure out. And I take that with me. One of the things he's, would tell me repeatedly, as long as he's been here, he says, "You know, you never stop learning in this job. You know, this is your first term, learn, watch, learn, learn, learn." He says, "I've been here more than 30 years, and I'm still learning." So that's one of the lessons I'll take with me. But as much as he had sort of the control here, as much as he had of that institutional knowledge and that experience, and as much as he dined with kings and presidents from all over the world, his feet were always on the ground. We knew John as a person. One of the cherished moments that I'll take with me is one of the times I've brought my nephew in. There's, on occasion, now he's eight years old, a little boy who comes in to City Hall with me. He's not my son, and I see the looks in the elevator when he's with me. He's my nephew. And the first time I had him here, I was showing him where I push my yes and where I push my no, and when I want to speak. And we look over, and John's famous. That's all he needed to do, just that look in his eye. And you know, you got to go over and report what's going on. And we took some pictures. And a couple of weeks back, Ron brought me the pictures, and I brought one to John for him to sign, because I knew that this was a legend that my nephew had an opportunity to meet. And like that Trojan ticket, I wanted to keep it for the future, because it was going to mean something. And John could have written anything. He could have just signed his name, he could have just said, "Nice meeting you." He could have done anything, because I'm sure he signs hundreds, if not thousands, of pictures and letters all the time. But he wrote something special. He said, "Christian, thank you for helping me run the meeting. Your friend, John Ferraro." And I took that home, and I showed it to my nephew. And just like the little boy in France, that they didn't speak the same language, but John knew exactly how to touch him, I read it to my nephew, and his eyes just lit up. He met John once and had two minutes of an experience with him. But that's how much he was able to impact my nephew. And that just goes to show that John was a great, not just a council member, not just a president, not just a civic leader, but a great person, along with what we knew about his love for Margaret and that of his family, his love for this body, just his love for humans and for people. That, and he's kidding me all the time, that MIT was the number-two football program in the country, not the number-one. And with all of that, I want to end with saying that, you know, a lot of us have just been reelected or recently elected. And through the political process, when you're running for office, or when you're in forums and debates, you're asked, "Who is your role model, or who is the one historical, political figure that you admire the most, or that you'd like to pattern yourself after?" And some people cite presidents like John F. Kennedy, some people cite civil rights activists like Martin Luther King. Well, today, I have a new answer. The historical figure I admire the most is John Ferraro.
Thank you. We're now going to turn to the voices of experience and hear from our alumni. We have eight of them that I know of in the chamber today. Let me first invite Richard Altore to come up. Any microphone you like. Whichever one you want, Richard. Come up here, you can do it there. Come up here, you can do it there.
Thank you very much, Madam President and members. You know, a lot has been said about John Farraro. And, you know, about the greatness of the man. You know, he is a big man in stature, but he was, you know, a bigger man as a human being. You know, I said I was gonna do it. You know, to me, I got the privilege of, of working with two great men. One was flamboyant, man that dressed in $3,000 suits, had language that was somewhat colorful, to say the least, maybe not as colorful as my language, but very close to it. A man that, that loved the institution that he was a part of, and did great things for the state of California. And then I had the privilege of, of coming to Los Angeles to work for a man that was He was like a father. Too many. But, you know, you talk about funny things about John Farraro, you know, he used to always say, “Hey, baby, how you doing?” And that was his way of asking you, whether it was in the morning or in the afternoon, just, you know, how life was treating you. Now, to show you how age has changed, he may have talked about the fact that he was a brother, the fact that he was, you know, a member of the Latino Caucus. Well, to me, he was a member of the Chicano Caucus. And, you know, I was the first one, for many years, that came down to Los Angeles and had the great privilege of following another great, great man, Art Snyder. But, you know, John Farraro was, you know, was a man of his word. He is, you know, fiercely loyal. And, you know, there were times where, I mean, I got mad at John Farraro. And one of the times, Ron Deaton reminded me yesterday, it had to do with Zev and I. You know, Zev and I had our battles and everything else, and I think it was, it was right after, I think he got elected, you know, God elected his president of the city council, and he was gonna, it was, the fight was who was gonna be chairman of finance. And, you know, on the way to the airport, I got on the phone and, because I heard that Zev was gonna be the chairman. And, I mean, you can imagine the words that I used on the phone, I mean, you know. And he just said, you know, “Look, I wanna do, I’m gonna take care of you, baby, don’t worry about it,” you know. And I said, “Well, you know, but how are you taking care of me and the like?” And I can honestly say that, you know, everything that he ever did for me was the right thing. I may not have believed it was the right thing at the time, but it was always the right thing ultimately. And he would later on, you know, remind me of those things, of what he did, and, “Didn’t I tell you, baby, that was the right thing to do?” And I said, “Yeah, John, you know, you were right again.” And John is, is bigger than life. For those of you that only had an opportunity of working with him for a few years, you missed on a lot. Because, you know, from one end, from the flamboyant, very outspoken, articulate person, to just a big man, as his wife times said many times, the teddy bear that he was, God, I mean, he is, he truly is a giant of what he has done for this institution, what he has done for the city of Los Angeles, and everything he cared about was, you know, about the members. And that’s one thing I’ll always admire about him. He knew how to deal with the Nate Holdens, just as he knew how to deal with the Richard Allatorres, he knew how to deal with the Rudy’s of Ornages, the Ruth Galanters, and you name it. He had his own way of dealing with people that is unlike anybody that I’ve ever met. And this city has, has lost a great man. But, you know, all of us will always have our own, you know, stories about John Farraro. And I know that, that the city is a better city for John Farraro, and I know that I am. And I know that anybody that he has ever touched is that much better of a man and a woman, you know, because of John Farraro. Thank you.
Thank you. Former Councilmember Roz Wyman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chair. Mike and Alex, you were really old by the time you got here, I think, remembering back a few years. But anyway, I have known John over 50 years. That’s a long time to be a friend. And he was just a remarkable friend and such fun. But I have to tell you, in our days, we were pretty tough on when a nominee came for a commission. And John wanted to make sure, as a police commissioner, that he got a unanimous vote. And sometimes, some of us were considered tough. So John made a call, he knew that I knew, there was a woman, by the way, the only woman in America to ever be a fight promoter, named Eileen Eaton. And Eileen was a friend of John’s, and he knew that I loved Eileen, and so he decided to have Eileen call me first. And so he came in and he said, “Well, now we have a mutual friend.” And I said, “And who is that?” And he said, “Eileen Eaton.” And he said, “But one other thing I want you to know, as you probably know, you know, I was a big man at SC in football.” And he said, “I know you went to SC, and so that qualifies me as a good member to be a police commissioner.” And I said, “Well, we have pretty tough chief of police.” And chief of police today is a pussycat compared to, we had, we had Chief Parker. Woo! I tell you, he would arrest his own mother if she was in trouble. And so I said, “Well, you know, he’s pretty tough.” And he said, “Well, I think I can handle him.” So I said, “Okay, John, I’ll give you my support.” And so he became a police commissioner, and he called me one day and he says, “I’m here,” I said, “I’m making a call because I’m either gonna save your career, or you’re gonna have your career made.” And he said, “The chief of police has found out that you’ve got a baseball pool, dollar baseball pool.” And he says, “He’s still mad at you because you brought in a motion to have the police officers open their shirts, remove their ties in summer, and you have broken down the military establishment of the police department, and he’s really still mad. And he found out about your pool.” And he said, “I only had a pool my whole life, my mother had a pool, baseball pool. That’s what affected me, I guess, toward baseball.” But anyway, he said, “What do you want me to do? I’ve heard about it.” And I said, “Well, John, go get me out of trouble.” And so John talked to the chief, and as it turned out, the pool didn’t get me in too much trouble, and John helped save me. But one other thing I do remember, when John called, when he became a city council person, he called and he said, “Roz, give me some advice.” And I said, “Well, John, you’ve been around, how can I give you any advice?” He said, “Well, if you had a piece of advice, what would you say?” And I said, “Well, I think the thing I’d probably tell you is that remember, everybody’s with you until roll call. And then, all of a sudden, they aren’t there.” And I said, “Just maybe that’s the best piece of advice I could possibly give you.” And John called after he was in the city council, just a couple of months. And he said, “Roz,” he said, “you know, I had all those votes lined up. And he says, “I remember your one piece of advice.” He said, “They weren’t with me once the roll started.” And he said, “That was good advice.” But you have so many people, there’s just hundreds of stories about John. But I have to tell you one thing, I am so pleased that John was honored during his lifetime. Celebrate a day that you will enjoy. And I think it’s something we all ought to remember, that it’s nice to remember people while they’re alive, and let’s not wait to pass those roses around. And I am so pleased that John was honored by the Coliseum, and he was honored by the city. And to all of you, I say that your, your memories are just marvelous to remember, and is something that we cherish when we have had a special friend. And John Ferraro is a special friend, and God bless him and his family.
Thank you, Roz. Next, former councilman, former supervisor, Ed Edelman.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Back in 1966, I was a young city councilman, and we had a vacancy on the city council. Harold Henry from the, I guess it’s the 4th district, had passed away, and we had to make a decision. One, should we appoint somebody, or should we call a special election? I remember at that time, the city council was narrowly divided, although it was probably more Republican-oriented than Democrat-oriented. And we had to make that decision. I remember John, John’s name came up, and I thought immediately, if we could get John appointed, we’d probably get a Democrat, for sure, maybe a moderate Democrat, but a Democrat. And in my younger days, maybe I was more partisan. But I led the fight to get John appointed, and I think that was the last time the city council appointed someone to a vacancy. Ever since that time, Pat Russell and subsequently had to have a special election before they could get elected. Any rate, so I claim some credit for getting John on the city council. We worked together on many issues over the years, charter reform. He, I was chairman of the committee at that time on charter, and John was on it, and he let me take the lead, as he let so many other city councilmen, even though he was not chairman of the city council, he was wise enough to let someone who was interested in the area take the lead, and then he followed. But I think John had the common touch that we’ve all heard about. He could give you a needle that you felt immediately, because that was going right to the mark, he could get to the point, and didn’t like a lot of words. And you could deal with John, because he got right to you as an individual. I remember probably the greatest thing I gave the city was when John and I were competing for the Board of Supervisors in 1974, along with Ernie Bernardi, three councilmen running, and I got into a runoff with John. And I was lucky, and I, I won that election. And John came back to the city council, and after, I believe, Gibson passed away, the beloved president before John, John became president of the council and has served so well this city for so many years, as a moderating voice, as a person that everyone can work with, and that has contributed so much to the well-being of this city. So I feel I’ve been responsible, even though I won a victory, I think the city won a greater victory when John had to come back to the city council and became president of it. I’ll miss him. I’ll miss his wonderful humanity, and his wit, and his charm.
Thank you, Ed. Next, former councilmember Joy Picas.
The very first vote that I ever cast as a member of the city council was on July 1st, 1977, to elect John Farraro to his first term as city council president. However, the vote was unanimous, so it didn’t buy me a lot. I was named Chair of the, what was then called the Building and Safety Committee. I, I, what’s so really remarkable about John, so very unique, is that he wears and always has worn the mantle of power, both gracefully and graciously. And having humility in these corridors of power, the hallowed corridors of power from across the street, is a very extraordinary quality. John was also accessible. He was accessible to the so-called important people of City Hall, other elected officials, department people, staff people, and also to constituents, to ordinary folks who needed to access City Hall, and, and, and the powerful there. And John was always there to listen to them. He always had time, despite the extraordinary duties of being council president, on top of being a council member for a large and varied district. John’s wit and his fairness are truly legendary. And John managed to bring together the 14 other council members, to bring together their diverse talents, their diverse personalities, their, and their diverse constituencies into a whole that worked for the benefit of the people of Los Angeles. John, we will all miss you.
Thank you, Joy. Next, former councilman Mike Wu.
Madam President, it occurred to me, as I was listening to the memories of the various council members, that it was John Farraro who was responsible for introducing me to Richard Reardon. You may recall the days around 1990 or 1991, after the, the big ethics controversy, I was the chair of the committee that had ushered through the ethics reform package, and it was hard enough to get it through the city council. But once it got through the city council, we had to figure out, how are we gonna get the voters to approve a package on the ballot with public financing of campaigns, pay raises for elected officials? How are we gonna do this? So I went to John Farraro, and I asked John, “John, we’re gonna need a lot of help getting this through.” And I recalled that John himself was not exactly the most enthusiastic backer of the package that ultimately got through the council. But John turned to me and he said, “Well, first of all, here, here’s a phone number, call Dick Reardon, ask him for $10,000.” So I was accustomed to asking people for $100, $500, but to call somebody I didn’t really know and ask for $10,000, but John said, “Do it.” So I said, “Okay, I’ll do it.” And I did it, and the first thing that amazed me was that Reardon said yes, but the second thing was that John Farraro had these amazing connections. And, and it’s the connections, the relationships, the personal relationships that I really wanted to underline about John Farraro. Right now, I’m teaching a class at USC about citywide policy issues. One of the midterm exam questions I gave was asking the students to write down, “What do you think should be the rules that govern when elected officials write a letter of recommendation for somebody? What should be the rule about allowing a homeowner association president to get free parking in City Hall? When should you do favors for other people?” And it’s been striking to me that a lot of the students believe very strongly in rules, especially written rules, but a lot of young people don’t really understand the importance of relationships. They don’t really understand what I think John Farraro was really the epitome of, which is the basic human relationship, that if you do something for someone, they may want to do something for, for you in the future, and that relationship is really the basis of getting things done. So at a time like this, when politics tends to be cold and hard, when politics tends to be so impersonal, I think that the, the key lesson to learn from the life of John Farraro is that it’s really relationships, friendships, people doing things for other people, that really makes things work. And so I thank John for that lesson.
Thank you, Michael. Next, former councilmember Art Snyder. Next, former councilmember, Art Snyder.
Well, the first thing I learned from John Ferraro was how to take a good four-point stance on defense. I watched him play in his last year All-American at USC while I was playing high school football at San Fernando High. And I adopted his four-point stance. Unfortunately, I never made All-American. But it did help my aggressiveness on the line a great deal. When I came to City Hall in 1979 as Field Deputy to Councilman John Holland, I was sent over to the Police Commission to carry some kind of message that John, who was chairman of the Police, Fire, and Civil Defense Committee at that time, had for Mr. Ferraro. And when I went over and caught John, I think it was 1980 or something when I was there, and caught John and gave him the message, I even forget what it was. He said, ah, you're John Holland's new deputy. And I said, yes, sir, that's right. And he said, never had one before. And I said, well, you know how it is, I'm an SC man, and so he couldn't, he had to have me on his staff. So he was very pleased with that. But he said, there's one secret to this, Arthur, and don't talk too much about USC over there, because you got too many of those UCLA people, and you're going to get yourself in trouble. So I always tried to play that down. But when I took my oath of office and I was on the council for a few days, I think the first time that I was in a real floor fight early on, I have to confess that I stuck a couple of pins in some of my colleagues. And after the council that day, he asked me if I'd walk with him to his office. And he said, Arthur, I want to talk to you a little bit about collegiality, and how we get along on the floor of the council, and about addressing the council chair, and about not saying bad things about your colleagues. If you want to argue about the issue, argue about the issue. Attack the points, but don't attack your colleagues. And for those of you that read the book that I left behind when I graduated from this institution here, that's a main theme running through it. And we're talking today about what we've learned from John Ferraro. And I think that John Ferraro's very practical instruction to us who have been fortunate to know him, and to us who have worked with him for the good of the city of Los Angeles, is the instruction of collegiality. And let those who are today on the council, and who will be in July on the council, and who will join this council in the years of the future, be also instructed by John Holland, by John Ferraro. Three great people who would instruct you the same thing, John Holland, John Gibson, and John Ferraro. To treat your fellow members with respect, to treat their ideas with respect, and to try to work with them to solve their problems, knowing that none of us in the city of Los Angeles now, in the past, or in the future, will ever be better by denigrating each other, but will only be made strong if we follow the philosophy that John Ferraro has given us and has left us. And there, as we look for a real lesson, there is a good practical lesson that all of us can live by.
Thank you. Former Councilman, Bob Wilkinson.
Madam Chairman, members of the city council, former colleagues, all I want to say is, John, I've known you since SC in '44 and '45. And I was one of your friends when you first become Police Commissioner on the city council. Those of us in the class of '53, there's just a few of us left. But, John, you'll always remember, be remembered by all of us, whether we're former councilmen or present council members. Good luck wherever you are. Thank you. And I have one word to say, never use the word fantastic.
Thank you, Bob. And finally, former councilmember and current supervisor, Zev Yaroslavsky.
I think it was Churchill who said, everything that needs to be said has been said, but not everyone has said it. But I have a few things I want to say. First of all, John did, I'm sure that John cared about his legacy. But in a different way than most people care about their legacy. He knew his legacy would be in doing the right thing, time after time, day after day. And as a result, it's almost half-century service to the people of the city. Leaves quite a footprint that will never be matched again. John became like he did for a number of the members and former members, a personal friend to me and Barbara and my kids, especially my son. And I took my son in August, before he started college, over to John's house. We lived very close. And I said, before you go to college, you ought to go say hello to John. And I think we can be pretty open about it. I felt, you just didn't know when the last time you would see John, given what he was up against. And we had a nice conversation, watching a football game, some exhibition game on TV. John was laying in his bed, had a nice conversation with David. And I said, John, we ought to let you go. And motioned David to come over to his bedside, and he gave him a big hug. And that's the last time I saw John. It's the last time David and Barbara saw John. But my memories of this guy are very much alive, and will always be. I had a, we had some battles together early years, and we did a lot of constructive mischief together in most of the years. Richard was up here before. My favorite times around here was getting Richard and me and John up in John's office in the mezzanine. It was some crazy, fantastic, excuse me, Bob, idea. And we knew that if Richard and I and John agreed on the idea, we could sell it to the rest of you. If we couldn't sell John on the idea, it was probably a pretty bad idea. And more things got hatched in that mezzanine office than I care to remember. Deaton was co-conspirator, of course. By the way, I haven't heard Deaton's name brought up very often here, and I, very much a co-conspirator. Which brings me to another thing about John. He surrounded himself with people, both on his council staff, the way he deployed the talent on the council, and in the CLA staff. Surrounded himself with people who could do him good, who were talented, who would threaten a lesser person intellectually, who most of us would not want to be surrounded by. But he was not intimidated by smart people. He realized that they could give him the ability and the tools to do an even better job. And a lot of what he accomplished is a result of his confidence in people. Why he ever appointed me chairman, and Richard, I don't know if you're still here, to the Finance Committee when I was seven years out of college, is beyond me. I'm not sure I would have ever done it. But he had confidence, and he had faith in a lot of us at a relatively young age. And I think it served all of us well, to be sure. There's so many things, so many cliches that come to mind, and I hate to use cliches. But this city has lost a giant. Not just figuratively, but literally, politically. He has more of a list of accomplishments to his resume than all of us sitting in this room combined. And he never sought to take credit for it. The credit he got was seeing the accomplishments bear fruit, as they have over the years. Last thing I want to say in kind of a light vein is, actually, about this point in time, John would be saying, you said that you were going to make that, your last comment five minutes ago, and then shut me off. And then he would tell me to get a haircut. John loved to travel. And he was a great ambassador for this city, wherever he went. And he went to all four corners of the world. But I remember one trip we took, and I was fortunate enough to be asked to go on this very important sister-city mission to Berlin, which is our sister city. And we were in Berlin, and we get to breakfast a couple of days after we arrived in the hotel. And John says, you'll never guess what happened. My phone rang at 4:30 this morning, and it was Jane Fritch of the Los Angeles Times. And Jane is now writing for the New York Times. And I said, really? What did she want? She wanted to know what we're all doing back here. And I said, well, I said, John, what we ought to do is just put together the itinerary. And when you call her back, if you call her back, you just give her the itinerary. And I said, what did you do yesterday, John? He said, well, I asked a cop for directions. I said, good, we'll put that down as consultation with local law enforcement officials. John had a great sense of humor. I will miss him. I know we all will. And I just wish that all the three and a half million or more people of the city appreciated what he meant to them.
Thank you. And finally, the 16th councilmember, and probably John Ferraro's closest friend and confidant in City Hall, Ron Deaton.
They gave me enough time to kind of build up my courage, I think. Today, I was quoted in a newspaper saying that three things for John Ferraro. One was University of Southern California, Margaret and this city. I think at the university, he learned teamwork. He learned that he was a tackle. He realized it was just as important to block as it was to throw the pass. And he played both sides, defense and offense. And he played it here, just the same way. And by the way, there was only one caucus. It was his caucus. There wasn't a Latino caucus, there wasn't a black caucus, there was a John Ferraro caucus. I know. Yaroslavsky was in it sometimes. Often enough to make it interesting. Margaret was a special case for him and for me personally, because it gave my wife ability to instruct me on how to treat her. And accordingly, that did happen. And she always, my wife, was always amazed at the way that relationship went, and worked towards that relationship with us. And I think we've tried to emulate that as best as we could. But that was an important issue. A family with him. And at this point, while I'm thinking about it, I'd like to introduce his two sisters, Rose and Mary, who are here. And while we're talking about the other parts of the family, would his staff stand up? By the way, this doesn't include the entire CLA's office, just the personal staff of CD4. John was, family extended beyond Margaret and beyond his staff and his sisters, and it was a city family. And as a city employee, I want you to know that employees throughout this city looked at him as being the anchor, the rudder, the person who kind of kept this place going. And it was my privilege to work with him for many years. I was relating to Rita Walters last night, that many years ago, when Bill McCarty was selected as CLA, there was a vote on the council floor between two people who were running for it, was Wayne Kelly and Mr. McCarty. And I had not applied, but I got one vote. It was John Ferraro's vote, even though I had not applied. And so our friendship has gone back many, many years. And I think that the important thing about his, the third part of his existence, if you will, of the city, and we talk about the arena, we talk about the zoo, we talk about the Olympics, and those were the things that all of you knew about. I see Bill Letty in there. John Ferraro was Mr. Water. He was Mr. Solid Waste. He was Mr. Sewer. He was things that nobody else cared about. He made sure that things happened, that the city was protected, that when the things, the necessary resources, the airport needed help, the harbor needed help, they didn't, the Department of Water and Power building was named after him, not because it was a nice building. It was a nice building. My wife wrote him a lie's letter, because that's where my wife and I met, was in the Department of Water and Power building. And she said that, because she's very interested in water and power issues as well, since she started her career there, that she could think of no person that more represented the things that the Department of Water and Power had brought to this city than John Ferraro. And that she was very pleased, if you will, that they had named our building, my wife and mine, since we met there, after John Ferraro. And he cherished that note from my wife as well. But whether it was police officers or firefighters, whether it was where to put the trash, where were you going to get our water, he was there. He was always there. And he didn't take credit. Somebody earlier said that he had a part in the arena. Let me tell you, he didn't have a part in the arena. I was there. As Mr. Henderson said, there would be no arena. There would not have been a lot of other things in this city if it had not been for John Ferraro. He was, as they've said, a giant, but he was a gentle giant. He was a big, big person. And I'd like to just end on what my daughter said last night, as she was saying grace at dinner. God bless John Ferraro, and thank him for all his father, my father's memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. I know that's hard for you, as it is for all of us. That completes our formal program. We are joined, just so you know, we've been, throughout this, we've been joined by the police chief, the fire chief, the general manager of the zoo, and a number of other people from throughout the city, who all join, all of us, in expressing our condolences and best wishes to the family, and to his three and a half million friends in the city, and all the rest of them everywhere else. Let me just remind you that the funeral will be on Monday at 10:00 a.m. at St. Brendan's, 310 South Van Ness. And on Sunday evening at 8:00, there will be a viewing at the same church. We do have refreshments for you across the hall. And thank you all for coming and being a part of our send-off for our great leader, John Ferraro. And I believe we are ready to formally adjourn the meeting. So do you want to call the roll for adjournment? Thank you. We are adjourned.